Okay, with that, I will call to order this meeting of the Ledyard Plan and Zoning Commission. It is Thursday, October 4th, 2021. This is a remote Zoom meeting and it is being recorded. I'll ask all participants to mute your line when you're not speaking, so that we can keep echoing and things to a minimum. With that, I will call, uh, call the roll. Ms. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Right.
Mr. Capeon.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Chair is present. Mr. White's Carver is excused. I will be seating Mr. Capeon for this meeting. Mr. Wood, did you review last time's public hearing? So you're up to date on the previous public hearings?
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you very much for asking.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have citizens petition. So anyone from the public who wishes to speak about any item that isn't on the agenda, I welcome you to speak now. When you start to speak, just give us your name and address so we know who you are. And then you have a couple of minutes to talk to us. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Eric Treaster. During your last meeting, you approved a change in the zoning of the four acre property at 1528 Route 12 from CIP to the Gales Ferry Design District, which will become effective on November 1st. The Gales Ferry Design District allows both pubs and taverns and parks and playgrounds by right with commission approval. It was clear during the public hearing that the applicant intends to develop a dog-friendly craft beer tavern with an outdoor patio and a fenced area, which eventually will be used as a dog park as the two allowed principal uses of the property. His application may be submitted as early as November 1st. During the hearing, the applicant's attorney asserted that a dog park is allowed as a principal use under the Parks and Playground Use listed in the use table. The reason I am here this evening is because I was surprised that no one challenged his assertion that an unregulated privately owned dog park is an allowed use in Ledyard. In my opinion, a dog park is not listed as a principal or an accessory use in the regulations. And if a use is not listed, it is prohibited. I understand that a well-designed and managed dark dog park is a place where dogs can play off-leash in a controlled environment under the supervision of their owners. I understand that off-leash dog areas provide a community setting in which people can gather to observe the interaction of groups of dogs at play. I understand that dog parks allow owners and their dogs to spend time together and offer dogs space for play and companionship with other dogs. And I understand that roaming free is beneficial for dogs. However, there are legal ramifications, design considerations, and unique social and behavioral patterns of dogs that need to be addressed. And just as with kennels, there are environmental noise, safety, and health issues relating to dogs that must be in the regulations for dog parks. Proper management of a dog park should include the inspection of dogs for lice and oral papillomas. Dog parks should be supervised. Toys and the common areas of dog parks should be sanitized daily to prevent the spread of bacteria and diseases. There should be separate play areas for large dogs and small dogs. A dog park should have double gated entry and exit points. Dog parks should have adequate drainage, benches for humans, shade for hot days, adjacent parking, water, pooper scoopers to pick up and dispose of animal waste in covered trash cans, and regular maintenance and cleaning of the grounds. Groundwater should be protected. Dog parks should offer wheelchair access and handicap parking. And babies and young children should not be allowed in a dog park. A dog park should have regulations addressing the liability of the dog owners, a minimum age such as four months for dogs in a dog park, a requirement that dogs must be vaccinated and licensed, that they have a collar, and the collar must be on the dog at all times, a limit of three dogs per owner that are off-leash, that dogs in heat are not allowed, that owners are responsible for the immediate removal of fecal matter, that aggressive dogs are not allowed off-leash, that activities such as frisbee throwing, bicycling, and sports are not allowed in an off-leash area, and that, and there is proper liability insurance, that a dog park can only be used between dawn and dusk, that dog owners are responsible for keeping their dogs from digging and are responsible for filling any holes their dogs create, that dogs must be leashed while entering and entering the dog park, and that there are no food or dog treats inside a dog park. In my opinion, dog parks should not be allowed in the Gales Ferry Design District for the same reasons our regulations require kennels to be on a minimum of 10 acres in industrial districts and require a special permit. The risks are otherwise too great. Another issue is that a dog park should have a six-foot fence, which would likely be a chain link fence. However, chain link fences are prohibited on page nine of the design guidelines for the Gales Ferry Design District. This prohibition is not advisory, but is a mandatory requirement. In conclusion, because an application for a dog park could be received for 1528 Route 12 as early as November 1st, I urge you to amend the agenda this evening to discuss if a moratorium should be placed on the receipt of dog park applications. The discussion should not take long. If your consensus is that dog parks are clearly not allowed under the existing regulations, then there is no issue and no need for a moratorium. But if it is, but if the regulations are unclear, it is likely there will be litigation if the commission denies the application. If your consensus is that dog parks are intended to be allowed and there is no need for supplemental regulations or a special permit, then there is also no need for a moratorium. But if your consensus is that dog parks are allowed but should not be allowed or should only be allowed if regulated or require a special permit or should only be allowed where kennels are allowed, then I urge the commission to place a moratorium on the acceptance of applications for dog parks to allow time for the regulations to be amended before the commission receives the expected application for a dog park at 1528 Route 12. Thank you, and I'll have, I'll be happy to answer questions and I will enter a copy of the presentation for the record.
Thanks, Eric. And so my, my only response is that in, in my mind and when we have discussed this previously, the, there is a difference between a kennel and a dog park. And I think one of the things that, you know, can get problematic is, you know, what is sort of called a doggy daycare, which is a during the day type of kennel. You know, and I think that's something that does gray that line. But certainly, in my opinion, kennels and a park that allows dogs in it are, are pretty far apart as far as uses go. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Hi, Jim Morak from Christie Hill Condos.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, good. So I, I think that the Scully couples as entrepreneurs are wonderful and I could see a lot of benefits. So that's, I'm not opposed at this point. The pub's gone through, so that is what it is. As far as the dog park, I'm just, my only concern, and I did speak with neighbors and their concern, is it's not really obvious to us, Mr. Woody, where the laws are documented as far as if it was a private dog park next to us with respect to things like feces, urine, a lot of, let's say, getting very noisy and then also requirement for vaccination. So my understanding is that, that some towns have in place laws if it's a public park, but my understanding is this would be a private park. And it's really not obvious to myself and my, my fellow residents at the condos next door about if that's documented and where it is.
So first of all, just for clarification, no, no pub or anything has gone through. So there is, there is no approval on that lot right now for that. That application still has to come in. So, you know, all that we did last month was change the underlying zone, which would allow an application for a pub or tavern there. But that has not gone through. So just as clarification so you understand. Sorry, were you saying something?
Oh, no, no, I was saying, okay, understood that part, yep.
Yep. And so, you know, as far as the second one, you know, I, I'm not sure what to say. You know, we don't have an application in hand for what is actually going to go in there. I, I don't know that there is going to be a dog park. I don't know what it's going to look like. I don't, so I can't really answer any of those questions. So I think those are fair questions to bring when the applicant shows up. But, you know, right now, without an application in hand, I can't, I can't really say anything.
Okay, so, so Mr. Woody, if I understand correctly, if those concerns are still around at the time the application is presented, then that's, that would be the appropriate time for us to, to see whether or not we needed to put regulations in place if there were not any. Is that correct?
Um, so we, we can't put regulations in place during the application. What I'm saying is I don't know how to answer your questions about a specific application that doesn't exist yet. So I, I can't answer, you know, what, what they're going to do in regard to feces when I don't know that there's going to be, I, I don't, I don't know what they're going to do there. So I, I really don't, you know, I can't, I can't give you a better, a better answer than that, I don't think.
Okay. Okay, so not to beat the horse, sir, just have a last question for you. Do we, I mean, do we have in general in Ledyard, are you aware of any, anything we have in place for, for, for private dog parks? Not, not even next.
I, I'm, I'm not aware of any municipal regulations that exist regarding dog parks.
Okay, okay.
I'm not aware of them.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Chairman Woody, this is Eric Treaster again, just briefly.
Sure.
If somebody came into the office and asked if a dog park was allowed in Ledyard by right, which is, which, would, would the answer be yes or no?
If they asked me, I would say yes, in Gales Ferry.
Do you think they should be regulated?
Uh, not particularly, no. I, I, I think that a dog park is a park that allows dogs.
Does, does the commission members agree with you? Because this will be a commission decision when the application comes in.
I, I'm welcome with any commissioners deciding to answer or not answer.
Because, because if there is a question, even a little question, you should have a moratorium, maybe only for a week, but just enough time to get the regulations in place. We know that that application is going to come in. They said it, their attorney said so. And I, I think we should be prepared for it because,
Okay.
because otherwise, we're going to end up with a nightmare and won't be able to do anything about it because it will become, it will become lawful and pre-existing once those regulations are changed.
Okay.
Caution is warranted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treaster. Does anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, I will move on to, did I hear someone? I think it may have just been an echo. I'll move on to approval of additions to and or change to the order of the agenda. I will just make a note, Deb, if you could scroll down, at least on my screen, under reports, bullet A is application PZ 21. We will be addressing reports A under new business. So what is reports A will become public hearing applications B. If anyone has any questions about that, I think it was just a snafu in our system. Hearing no complaints, I'll move on to public hearings and applications. I will reopen the public hearing for application number PZ 21-10 Resub, Fireside Farm, Four Lot Resub Division, 34 Village Drive, owner Anthony Silvestri, 16 Reuven Drive, Ledyard, Connecticut. I will work through the exhibits and bear with me, some of these are not numbered. So I'll be going a little bit slowly. So I apologize for all of those trying to hurry to dinner. We're starting at exhibit 12. Exhibit 12 is a comment, an email from James Mann Fire Marshal. The planner read this at our last meeting, but I just wanted to make sure it was entered into the record. This is dated September 7th. Because the plans submitted are for single-family detached homes, I cannot apply the Connecticut State Fire Prevention Code. With that said, however, in my opinion, it'd be wise to amend our regulations to reflect the information out of chapter 15 of the CSFPC, which is a nationally recognized standard that I've attached to keep the town out of the possibility of potential litigation that could arise in the future should there be a major loss due to fire wars at these locations. Exhibit 13 is a comment from Steve Maslin dated September 16th regarding the drainage. I have reviewed the plans and storm range analysis for the subject application. I find that the road and stormwater management plans generally meet the provisions of the road and drainage ordinances with the following comments. One, though parameters for catch basin and drainage pipe installation may be derived from the plans as was done to support the stormwater analysis, I could not find where they were explicitly defined. Specific elevation should be added to the plans to correct this. The depiction of the level spreader on sheets five and six do not match the detail sheet on detail shown on sheet eight. I did not find a gutter flow analysis as required by part six, section one, paragraph C3B of the drainage ordinance. Exhibit 14 is revision B of the plans. These are dated September 9th, 2021. There is a further updated plan from this. This, that's an intermediate plan. Exhibit 15 is a hydrology analysis for 34 Village Farm Road. Exhibit 16 is a letter to Groton Utilities dated October 7th, 2021. Enclosed is revised set of plans dated July 6th, 2021 and revised 9/29/2021. These revised plans should address all of your review comments of August 2nd, 2021. I've also included our comments with annotations, how the item was addressed. Please review the enclosed plans for compliance with your requirements. The public hearing was continued until October 14th, so we would appreciate if we could get these quickly. Exhibit 17 is a memo from Steve Maslin dated October 12th, 2021. I have reviewed the supplemental information supplied in response to my comments about the drainage reports and plans for the subject application. The updates satisfy my concerns. Exhibit 18 is a application for septic plan review to Ledge Light Health District. Exhibit 19 is chapter five from our zoning regulations on conservation subdivisions. Exhibit 20 is a further updated set of plans dated September 29th, 2021. No. Did I have that number wrong?
Yeah, that was revised today.
These are the October 14th.
Yep.
Okay, exhibit 20 is the October 14th set of plans. Exhibit 21 is a ready to serve letter from Groton Utilities dated October 13th, 2021. Dear Mr. Bernardo, Groton Utilities, contract operator of the Ledger WPCA, currently serves Village Drive in Ledyard with adequate pressure and flow rates. Flow data and water main record plans are available upon request. The water that we supply meets all established federal and state drinking water standards. The Groton Utilities 2020 annual water quality report is available at grotonutilities.com. Exhibit 22 is a plan showing potential driveway constructions. Exhibit 23 is a letter from Ledge Light Health District dated October 14th, 2021, which states the plan and associated information submitted to our office on October 4th, 2021 for a proposed five lot subdivision commission review. Lots range from .81 to 1.92 acres and are to be served by public water and private septic systems in the town of Ledyard. The Ledge Light Health District does not issue approvals for subdivision or commission reviews, but our recommendation for suitability of the previously stated planned lots to accommodate the Ledge Light Health District subdivision submission requirements and Connecticut Public Health Code are as follows. Lots 32 Village Drive and 36 Village Drive are recommended suitable in their current condition. Lot 36A Village Drive is recommended suitable in its current condition if no foundation drain is required. Lot 34A is recommended suitable if and when the following plan issues are addressed. Primary leaching area crosses the proposed property line. Leaching must be a minimum 10 foot from property lines and be located on the same lot as the building served. Existing lot known as 30 Village Drive to be reviewed under B100A. Existing lot known as 16 Reuven Drive to be reviewed under B100A. Exhibit 24 is the B100A for 16 Reuven Drive. And exhibit 25 is the B100A application for 34 Village Drive. Exhibit, I think exhibit 26 should be stricken from the record, so exhibit 26 is blank. Exhibit 27 is the planner's comments, which I'll allow the director of planning, Juliet Hodges, to address.
Do you want me to do it now or after the applicant presents?
I, I'd prefer that you do it now so that everyone has a chance to understand where you're coming from. And then we'll ask if people have questions after the presentation, they can address them then.
Okay. Somebody's waving at me in the doorway. I have no idea who that was. Um, all right, let me get them up on my screen then. Or can you share them, Deb?
It's that last exhibit, Deb. No, it's the, oh, that looks different than my screen.
Yeah. Here, I'm going to open this one. I think I might have messed it up a little bit. I think this is it. Can you see it?
Yeah.
That's the September 9th comments.
No, you can, sorry, you can scroll down. So basically, um, the comment, that's good. The comments that I provided the last time I've met with the applicants several times and we've gone over the plans and had them revised. Most of the comments have been addressed. I still have some concerns about whether GU has reviewed the latest plans. I mean, the letter that we received just said that, yes, they supply water and it's, you know, good quality or whatnot, but somebody else have to help me out on what the actual requirement is from GU, what, what kind of agreement has to be in place. And then there's a question on wetlands approval. Has the plan has changed significantly? Whether this has to go back to wetlands for further review and approval because the, there's an additional lot. There's a slight extension on a pipe that goes under the wetlands and whether or not the conceptual driveways shown have to be actually, you know, proven to be possible, you know? And that was one of my comments. You can scroll down, Deb. Um, so Ledge Lights looked at it. I think, you know, the, the engineers have looked at it. Everybody else has reviewed it. It's just those two things were my outstanding comments. And Jim, there's a couple of typos still at the end. So there's a typo in general note six and the soil and erosion control note one. And also the, the wetland signature isn't live. So I'm, it's unclear because there's no note in the plan when these wetlands were flagged. And if it was back in 2010, you know, I'd question whether or not that's still valid or if there needs to be a live signature from the soil scientists. The rest, you read last time, so.
Okay. Who's speaking for the applicant tonight?
Let's see. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Mr. Bernardo.
Okay. Actually, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was not muted during, during that whole beginning part. Good thing I was quiet. Can you see me though? I don't know, I can't see myself, so.
We can see you fine, yeah.
Okay, okay. So since the last public hearing meeting, we went back and redesigned it, submitted a revision B to staff with incorporating the entire open space to one portion of the property. As you may recall, the, the previous application, we had clarification from the commission as far as we had a basically a one and a half acre piece and a three and a half acre piece. So we combined them all into one over on the Westerly side of the property. Part of your requirements for open space states that half of the lots, 50% of the lots must touch the open space. So even though we had lots of budding open space from the previous subdivision, that wouldn't stand for this re-subdivision. So your requirements are that open space has to be a minimum of 25 feet. So if you look at your plans at revision C, we wrapped the 25 feet around the subdivision to have access to all the lots from the subdivision onto the open space. And doing that, though, we were actually able to create a fifth building lot out of, out of the remaining land. The revision B that we submitted, we were attempting to continue using the property owner's existing driveway that services his house. After we had a discussion with staff and Mr. Cherry earlier this week, you know, we determined that the, the driveway for a common driveway needs to be solely on one piece of property. So what the applicant decided to do was towards the cul-de-sac portion of the property, we're going to construct a new common driveway through that section, which crosses over the existing wetlands. As, as staff told you before, in order to do that, we have to extend a drainage pipe there. So there's a question about whether there's going to be required for a revisit back to the inland wetlands commission for that. I guess the chairman is out of town and hasn't had a chance to take a look at it. So he, he wouldn't offer an opinion as far as what the process might be on that. So anyway, once you come in a couple hundred feet, we're actually going to connect back to the existing driveway. You know, Tony was pretty adamant about trying to keep the character of the driveway and the accesses to the back and really didn't want to cut a whole new driveway in. So I spent today, I met with staff Tuesday, spent the whole day this morning reconfiguring the lots again so that we've kept the 25-foot access strip all on 34 Village Drive. And then we have all the shared driveways coming off of that. The, the driveway for 36 Village Drive will have an easement across 36A. Again, we talked with staff about that on Tuesday. You know, the alternative would be to have another wetlands crossing and some wetlands filling. And so we are going to cross lot 36A with that driveway for 36. So if you go to sheet, I think it's five. Oh, I'm sorry, six. If you go to sheet six, you can see the driveway, I guess I, it, it, we have a common driveway running down lot 34 for about 100 or so feet, 200 feet. Then it's going to connect to the existing driveway, which again will be entirely on lot number 34 Village Drive with an easement for 36. And obviously easements for all the rest of the lots to access off of that. I do apologize again for just, I just submitted that plan late this afternoon. We were waiting, I was holding out as long as I could anticipating a review letter from Ledge Light as well as Groton Utilities. We did finally get those approvals about three o'clock this afternoon. Fortunately, neither one of them required any changes, but we were trying to incorporate any last minute changes into this revision. And then finally about two o'clock this afternoon, I, I couldn't wait any longer and I didn't want Juliet to wait any longer for those plans. So we did drop those off this afternoon. In addition, at the meeting, In addition, at the meeting, it was a request from the fire marshal and the commission that we had a turnaround. So we also added that to the set of plans. There's a, there's a fire truck staging area or a pull-off area which is shown on there. That location obviously could be moved to wherever the fire marshal finds suitable or the character of the fire marshal finds suitable. You know, Tony's a contractor, wherever they want it, he'll make sure they put it in that location. I know Juliet just mentioned about the wetlands. I did speak to the soil scientist that I use now, a gentleman by the name of Joe Thoreau. Joe is from the Volentown area and he actually is a wetlands officer for several of the towns up in the northeast corner of the state. And he's not aware of any statutory requirements that limit wetlands flagging to ten years. Although I have tried to get in touch with Mike Schaefer who did the wetlands, Mike's retired and living in Florida. And he's not responding, so I don't know that I could ever get a live signature. Joe said, you know, if there is a concern. By the commission, he can at least go out and check the areas where we're going to have some impact, but. We can discuss that with the wetlands chairman when he comes and takes a look at the plans. If he's concerned at all about. The crossings and some of the areas adjacent to the road. Joe could take another look at that and make sure that they can, you know, confirm that they are still the same way they were when this was flagged back in two thousand and ten. I don't think I have anything else. Again, we did just receive. I was kind of taken aback as well by the letter of from Groton Utilities. I did speak with Ed Wenke, who was the drainage engineer on this project. And I forwarded the letter to him and he said, yep, that's what you get. They're just saying that there's enough water. They have enough capacity and volume and it's suitable for. For drinking and that's basically the letter you get from them stating that your, your project can be served by their water, water usage.
Why doesn't it refer to the other lots?
Sorry, what was that?
It just says that we currently supply it to thirty-four.
Yeah, but I think because it says, it says it's referencing the subdivision or something as I recall in the letter. Excuse me for a second, else if I can find it on my screen.
Yeah, it says ready to serve water utilities at proposed residential re-subdivision thirty-four Village Drive.
Right, right. I guess, that's right. So I guess that's their way of saying that they've. They've accepted it or they, they accepted the extension of the water.
I did get a letter from Ray saying that he hadn't seen the latest revision. I mean, I don't know if that matters.
Oh, really? I did try to get ahold of Doug LaFontaine from Groton Utilities this afternoon after I had received that email and forwarded it to Juliet and. He didn't answer his office or his cellphone because I was looking for clarification or. You know, clarification email or something to provide to the commission, but I had, I did not receive that, so.
That's sort of my concern is that I've got, since the last meeting, we've got two revisions of plans. One that showed up today, which I'm sure the majority of the commission has not had a time to look at. And it's not clear to me that the, the letters that we've got saying, you know, this is okay, are actually referring. To the latest revision. And so I think that everything is here and so, but what I would like to ask is I would, my preference would be to. Get an extension for this public hearing to our November meeting. When everyone has had a chance to actually look at the plans that you presented here and to move forward on that.
Yeah, I understand, you know. The same way, I don't like to get comments dropped on me the night of a meeting or an hour, two hours before the meeting. I can't expect the commission to have time and staff. Although I don't want Juliet to work at, look at it too thoroughly. I wouldn't expect her to, in the four hours I had, she had to take a look at it to provide, you know, reasonable feedback on the, on the application.
Well, and my concern is for the commission, right? I mean, most commissioners have full-time jobs and so, you know, we just have not had time to review this.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
In order to extend this, we will need an extension letter from you.
Okay, we will. But I will get that drafted and sent over tomorrow morning. What, when is our six, we have what, sixty-five days? Do you know what the timing is on that, Juliet? When does that expire? Or is it sixty days? I can't remember, but.
I have to defer to Deb.
It would just be sixty days from last, from the October. From when they opened a public hearing, right? October.
Public hearing open on September ninth, correct?
No, it was just open, I'm sorry, September.
Yeah, September ninth.
September ninth, right. So that won't, that, the sixty days won't carry us. We should do it anyway in case for some reason the meeting gets canceled. That November meeting, for some reason, you don't get a quorum and it gets canceled. We don't want to put ourselves in a bind, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I think that would be acceptable to grant an extension to the November meeting.
I appreciate that. However, we've do got you here. Questions from commissioners for Mr. Bernardo on the latest revisions? So someone's got, is watching TV in the background or something. So if you could mute your line, whoever that is, I'd appreciate it. No questions for, from commissioners for Mr. Bernardo at this, at this point?
Can I ask one more question of the commission? Do you, do you require that the frontage lots also show a conceptual driveway or no?
The frontage lots, I believe so.
That's actually a good question. I meant to bring that up.
Sort of noticed it this afternoon that that one doesn't show it either.
Which one's that?
I think we have conceptual driveways for all.
Yeah, what, these were already printed when you had sent me the email about the grading, so I sent you an exhibit. By, via PDF this afternoon.
Yep, good. Deb, can you zoom in on this? Okay, and scroll down, so never mind. Thirty-six A, that frontage lot.
Sorry.
No, I believe thirty-six A is a frontage lot. I think it only says on interior lot, you must demonstrate that you can. Put a driveway. That's an interior lot regulation, I believe.
That's what I was asking the commission clarification on.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I put you right.
Oh, do we, do we need to show, I've never thought about that. Do you need to show a non-shared driveway for a frontage lot? I hadn't thought about that. I'll have to, that feels like a detailed regulation question I need to look at a little bit. I don't think that we've done that. I think the intention of the regulation asking for. Showing a conceptual driveway on an interior lot is to make sure that it's possible with a frontage lot. I guess the assumption has been because it's a frontage lot, it's doable.
That'd be something to consider.
Yeah, I, I haven't thought about that. That's a good question. I'm not sure. Yeah.
And then while we're thinking about it, since this is being extended to that is. If the regulation says that you have to show something that, you know, can in fact be constructed. Does wetlands have to tell you that it can? If it's going to cross wetlands or include filling of wetlands and blah, 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 do they have to approve it?
I mean, I would defer to staff on whether something's got to go when a change to a plan has become significant enough. That it needs to be revisited by wetlands, right? Because that's essentially the crux of the question. Has this been changed enough that wetlands needs to revisit?
Well, they haven't seen the conceptual driveways because they hadn't been added until I asked them to add it. I hadn't, you know, I hadn't really reviewed this. I wasn't the wetland staff reviewing it for the wetlands meeting, in other words, because I'm not that person. But when I got it, I noticed some deficiencies, but now they have been corrected, but they have never been reviewed. But would they have to give their blessing on the conceptual driveways? To prove that it could be a building lot?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you. I would probably defer to what the wetlands chair said and whether or not this. Reflects a significant enough change to what they think they approved. That it is, is no longer what they approved.
But, Mr. Chairman, can I add to that?
Please.
Yeah, well, my concern is we're going to have, we're going to be referring back to the inland wetlands commission. For an application for something that doesn't, not ever intend to be built now or in the future. We have. A shared driveway, shared driveway agreements will be in place, the subdivision will be approved with the shared driveways in place. These owners of these lots are going to be bound by that shared driveway agreement and. I don't, to me, I just think it's a wasted effort to tie them up with an application or review for something that's not going to happen, my, my opinion, but.
Yeah, I can understand that, but the intent of the regulation is to ensure that there is actually a way to provide driveway access to that. You know, without, even if something does happen with the shared driveway agreement, if that somehow, if somehow something changes, there is always preserved access to that lot.
Juliet and Nate, this is Mike Cherry. Can I interject?
Please, as the zoning official just.
And really going back to, you know, previous subdivisions, I know we haven't done a lot, but. Driveways are covered in section four-three and there are some requirements that don't necessarily apply to driveways coming off of cul-de-sacs. But yes, yet it does infer that we want to see where the driveway cuts are. In general, so granted, it's in the subdivision regs, so there is some latitude. But as far as showing the other one, I believe that was in a change to the zoning regs for interior lots. Showing driveways. And I didn't bring a set of zoning regs home, which is really. Unfortunate.
I believe it's fourteen-eight of your zoning regs.
Yeah, we're in the zoning regs and the commission does not have the authority to waive that. So I think if it says it's got to be there, it's got to be there. And that was a change. When we rewrote the regs, it wasn't there in earlier regs, like when. The original Via Verde subdivision was approved, we made it since then. And I want to say it was around twenty-twelve, but I'm not real good with dates anymore. So for what it's worth, I think you got to show the driveways because we. Have words about driveways in the subdivision regs unless you somehow figure out what it is you wanted to waive. But as far as the other part in the zoning regs, you got to do it.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I agree because the regs also mention, you know, not creating a hazard and being at least twenty-five feet away from other driveways and there's no way we could know if they are if they're not shown. So.
Thank you, Ms. Kamala. Any other commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Bernardo. We will try to close this out in November. And so with that, I will continue the public hearing for application PZ twenty-one dash ten resub. At seven forty-four PM until our November meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Bernardo.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next we are going to move to application PZ twenty-one dash eleven site. Seven Fairway Drive, Leadwood, Connecticut. Applicant is Jacob Gere for a site plan review for an auto dealer and repair facility. And so there are three plan sheets for this. Deb, I think G three, I think is probably, nope. Is it G two, which is the one that we probably want to open here?
Want the red line version one open?
Right, you are correct.
And that I think is.
That might be.
It's that one that says map. Oh, no, it isn't. No, it isn't.
Plan drawing, right?
Oh, yeah, that one, yeah. Oh, no, that's the.
I think it might actually be that plan proposed parking one.
Yes, it is. That's exactly right now.
Okay, I figure that's probably the easiest thing. Who do we have speaking for the applicant tonight?
Peter Gardner.
Good evening, Mr. Gardner.
Good evening. Peter Gardner for Jacob Gere. Proposing a automobile, automobile repair shop at Seven Ferry Drive. Seven Ferry Drive is the Electric Center Design District. Our site is one point oh three acres. And we're served by public water and onsite septic. Jake is proposing to build a thirty-one hundred square foot. Building to house the automotive repair facility, serving cars and light trucks. I met with Juliet this afternoon and we did redline sheet two to revise. A little bit, the left-hand side of the building as you look at it from the street. With regards to putting a little bit of. A walkway there and we pushed off the driveway twenty-four feet from that. Parking that is accessed on the left-hand side of the building. We believe we beat all the regulations and. The plans, I feel, speak for themselves. I can get into any details, any questions, but again, it's a thirty-one hundred square foot building at a one point zero three acre lot.
Just a couple of clarifications. So by the arrows pointing to the bollards, there's some red writing that I couldn't read. It looked a bit like doggles to me, but I figured it probably wasn't.
I think you're, there's a door, a reference to a door that's missing and then I had asked that the handicap ramp, since there's no slope here. When the person gets out of the car, it just goes straight up into the door. Otherwise, you know. Now he'd have to come over a curve and then another curb and not be able to get onto the ramp, so.
That could be door. So there is a pedestrian door now. They're essentially right in front of the. Handicap van unloading area. Is that correct? That's, that's what that is. So that makes sense. That answers a number of questions I had about how you were supposed to get to the pedestrian door in the far corner of the building.
That will have a ramp.
Yeah, okay, so handicap access is fairly straightforward then. So you unload there and get straight into the door. And so now the, the red lines on the, is that the south side of the building there? So that's a walkway now?
Yes, we, there was concern that the pedestrian door at the southwest corner of the building would have parking right up to it. So we put a four-foot walk in front of that that would extend. To a four-foot walk in front of the southeast corner of the building. There's still be access through. Those two walks to get into the building with a garage door. And I then widened out the driveway. To maintain the twenty-four foot width. And by, by the red lines that are on the left-hand side of the driveway. Where it makes a turn from the going west to going north.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood the red line changes there. Comments and questions from commissioners for Mr. Gardner?
Commissioner Woody, this is Commissioner Wood.
Please, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. My question has, really is not. Pretending to the drawing, but I know that Mr. Gear has an automotive repair on Thomas Road. Is this going to be the new facility? That would, that he would relocate to? And I know Mr. Gear, Mr. Jake Gear is here. So is this, is this in addition to the car repair facility that's on Thomas Road? Or is this, thank you.
Yeah, Jacob here. No, Thomas Road, that's going away. And we're moving into this as a whole, whole new thing, not in addition to Thomas Road.
Thank you. I wasn't, thank you very much. I wasn't able to. Understand whether this was in addition to your Thomas Road facility or a new enterprise or. A replacement for your Thomas Road. So thank you very much, Mr. Jake Gear.
Yes, sir.
And Chairman Woody, I wanted to add a couple of things that we had changed from the last plan just to. On Jake's behalf here. And I, I do appreciate. And I, I, uh, I do appreciate Jake was very good to work with here and was amenable to the changes that we had requested and. Um, has agreed to put some landscaping in front of that gravel parking area and fence around the rest of it. Eliminated the loop driveway and added some other fencing, so uh. If we could beef up any of the uh landscaping in that center, I don't know where you want, what you want to call it, the twelve feet. The, the required twelve-foot buffer in the front, if you have parking. And that, the white strip that goes up towards that handicap parking spot, you know, that would be great. That would certainly go a long way to help. You know, maintain. What I think the commission envisioned in these design districts, you know, to make the property more attractive, but I do feel like it will. Help that area by blocking the garage that's directly behind it. So I appreciate the changes that they made. Um, and I think it, it, since your design guidelines aren't mandatory, I think it gets as close as we can get. So I appreciate the willingness to put in the trees and. Landscaping.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, question, other questions or comments from commissioners? Uh, okay, so I, I have a, a few questions. So um, I'm, I'm glad Ms. Hodges uh mentioned the fence. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So uh, essentially, we're gonna have, um, is that a wood style fencing uh that'll go around uh three sides uh of the site? Um, and then it's uh some sort of um uh tree uh. Screening uh there in the front, essentially blocking the uh gravel parking area from the road?
We, we're proposing a six-foot-high stockade fence around, around the three, three of the sides. So the southern, uh, western and northern sides and uh the east side. We're proposing to do um. Evergreens, nine-foot-on-center that would uh block from the road, the gravel parking area.
Yeah. Uh, it, will it, will the, it, so what size trees are gonna go in there? Are, is, is a nine-foot spacing gonna get you, gonna get that mostly closed off or?
That we're calling for three-foot ever, uh, evergreens we planted now. And nine-foot on set will form a good hedge after a few years.
Okay. Um, so I'll uh echo what Ms. Hodges said is it would be nice to get some sort of landscaping. Um, essentially between the sidewalk and the building. Um, that serves a couple of purposes too, is it, it helps define. Um, the end of the sidewalk from your property. Uh, and so it would be really nice if uh, if we could incorporate a little bit of landscaping there. Um, so the, in the north side of the building, there is a utility connection. Is, is that underground power? Is that what that is referring to?
That's what I understood.
I think I. It's gonna have to be because the utilities there are underground.
Okay, and so that's power waters coming in on the north, from the north, the east corner of the lot?
Water's coming from the northeast and there is the uh proposed underground utilities are called for under plan.
Yeah.
Uh, right in the middle of the building.
Yeah, okay.
Between the, and um. For the record, we do call out the area that's been talked about by both the chairman and Juliette. Uh, to be green space in accordance with the specific regulation and zoning that, that addresses that. But uh, I think Jake will be happy to work with uh the town and. And I hope I'm not speaking too much for Jake, but he, he'll do, do what he can there.
Yeah, we want it to look good. I want it to look good, so whatever they think, couple more trees up front. I like that idea.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we're looking for uh, uh, involved horticulture, but I think a little bit more separation there will, will serve everyone to help separate the sidewalk from your property and. And provide what we're looking for there. Um, so I, I, I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, so it looks like the lot is, is very flat?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and so the, the, the access in and out seems quite safe. I see you've got stop signs uh marked there. Um, I like the handicap access. I like the change to the, the walk there. Um, I, you know, I. I, I, I don't see anything else that um is troublesome for our regulations. Um, last call from commissioners for any uh questions or uh concerns on this?
When sign location wasn't put on the plan.
I thought I found the signs. Oh, yeah, the advertising sign, yes.
I didn't know if there was gonna be anything on the road, but I forgot to ask you that.
No sign on the road.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, that's a good, that's a good business that could uh thrive without having signage.
Uh, so uh, with that, um, uh, I will go ahead and make, uh, make the motion. I've got it in front of me. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty one dash eleven site for Seven Fairway Drive, Ledger, Connecticut. Uh, of property owner Jacob Gear for the construction of a commercial auto repair facility with the following conditions. One, all requirements of the Leonard Fire Marshal and Building Official and Ledger Health shall be met prior to commencement of the operation. A site erosion sediment control bond estimate shall be submitted for review and approval by the town engineer, and the actual bond shall be in place prior to construction. Three, revised site plan to show corrected ramp access location for proposed handicap parking space. Four, revised plan to show additional pedestrian to the building from the side parking area and related minor relocation of some curving. Curbing and gravel parking area as shown in the red line plan submitted on ten fourteen twenty twenty-one. If I can have a second?
I would second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro. Um, and so just to note, the, uh, conditions three and four there were the changes that we, that uh, were shown in red line. Um, and the other two are, uh, you know, boilerplatey. Uh, any uh discussion or uh questions from uh the commission on uh this site plan approval? Quiet tonight. Uh, with that, uh, I will go ahead and uh call the vote. Uh, Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Capeau?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah.
Uh, and the chair votes yes, so the motion passes five oh. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Gear and Mr. Gardner.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Mr. Gardner can get back to his martini now, so I felt like we might be interrupting something there.
Lucky you.
He thought we didn't notice, but I noticed. Uh, uh, with that, uh, we'll move on to uh old business. Uh, and uh, under old business, we have uh the discussion of new legislation for marijuana growers and sellers. Um, uh, what's provided here uh is um a document uh that shows all of the uh town actions. Um, on sale and manufacturing of uh cannabis um, uh, in the area. Um, and so I wanted to talk about this a little bit because what I wanted to propose to the commission. Uh, was uh considering putting a moratorium in place. Um, and so first, uh, what a moratorium does. Uh, is it says that we're not going to uh allow these to land um in Ledger for a fixed period of time. Um, so you know, I think typical is, is what I've seen is for about six months to twelve months. Um, and the reason for this is when we talked about this at our last meeting, um, it, it was quite clear that the commission wasn't really in a place. Um, to start understanding uh how uh these should be regulated, if they should be regulated. Um, and part of that is the lack of guidance from the state um on what regulations are actually going to be in place around these. Um, when I read the state statute, it's quite clear to me that the state is telling us to modify our regulations uh to include. Uh, cannabis in one way or other. Um, you know, they specifically say, if you do not add this to your regulations. Um, then we will treat it as such. And so I think they're telling us, hey, guys. Modify your regulations, put these in there. Doesn't mean you need to put restrictive regulations in here, but put them in there. Um, and the impression I got from the commission is that we're not quite in a place that we know what to do there. Um, and given that, you know, it seems to me like the wise thing to do is to probably put a moratorium in place. Until we have more clear understanding from the state on what these are going to be like and uh we have more understanding what the town uh actually wants. Um, around these. Um, so that's my proposal is that, that we should, we should probably think pretty hard. Um, about uh putting a moratorium in place until we can make, you know, concrete decisions here. Um, and so I, I open it to comments, thoughts from commissioners. This is a, a, an, an open conversation. Um, in order to put a moratorium in place, we need to have a public hearing, so it's not something we're doing tonight. Um, you know, there is a process that we have to follow in order to do that. It's a conversation about whether or not we should start down that. So with that, comments or thoughts from commissioners?
Um, yeah, so we're still at least a year away from having. Any potential growers in Ledger, right? Is that accurate?
Where does that timeframe come from?
From the um, the, the licensing being open and available for people to purchase, but.
Uh, I'll take your word for it. I'm not, I know it's, it, I know it's a while uh before those will be available. I don't know the, the time offhand.
I guess from, from that perspective personally, if we feel that we should do it, then maybe a one-year moratorium makes sense, but um. I think there's only eight towns in the whole state that have done that so far. Um. So I don't know. I don't think people are gonna be rushing. Let's say, but you never know. Uh, we had had a, an informal discussion previously that we thought we might consider regulating them similar to alcohol sales.
Yeah, though, you know, there are a, there's a fairly long list of towns that are in the exploring phase. Uh, you know, that are sort of walking through that process of, you know, what do we want to do? Which is, I think where we are, right? You know, is this, is this what we want to do, you know, in order to essentially give ourselves breathing room to uh figure out what to do? Other thoughts from commissioners?
Commissioner Wood, I, I heartily support a moratorium. Um, and uh, if those dates that Commissioner Scanlon mentioned, uh, and I was trying to pull it up here before I spoke. But I, I, I think a twelve-month moratorium for us to um. Study, understand and research this would be a, a, a great idea. So I'm, I'm in favor of a moratorium.
Mr. Chairman, I would echo Marty's thoughts. I completely agree with the moratorium.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boudreaux.
And I will make a unanimous, I also agree with moratorium, although I'm, I'm not sure if it should be six months or a year. I, I don't think that makes to me, to me a whole lot of difference, but we should have a moratorium.
Okay, so I, it sounds like we got a path forward. And so what I, what I guess I'll ask um staff to do, um, if they can, is to run down. Um, what those uh deadlines are. Uh, right, it's not deadlines, but you know, what uh, when uh, uh, the grower permits will be. Um, issued, um, so that we can get some guidance on whether six months or twelve months is the right period of time. Um, and so uh, I, I think that, I think we got a plan forward then. So I, I, I thank the commission for that. You know, I, I wasn't quite sure what the right thing to do was, but it felt like if we're, if we're not sure what to do, then the right thing to do is to put the moratorium in place, so. Okay, uh, with that, uh, next uh item on our agenda is minutes from September ninth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman Tony Capeau, I move to accept the minutes as submitted.
Seconded by Commissioner Wood.
Thank you. Um, I'd actually ask, uh, this, this came in an email and, and I noticed the same thing. Um, uh, Ms. Dobson, if uh you could uh review um the audio record. Um, and just get the record of people uh who spoke uh in the public hearing added to the minutes. Um, that's the only correction I'd ask for. We should at least get the identities of who spoke.
Okay. And whether they were for or against it.
That's the only change I had. Did uh anyone uh else have any uh changes?
I'll accept as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Capeau, was my next question. Uh, with that, uh, I'll call uh the motion to approve uh the uh minutes uh as amended. Uh, Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Capeau?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah.
Uh, and the chair votes yes. Uh, so the uh motion passes five oh. Uh, next up, uh, under course, correspondence, uh, we have uh an email, um, a letter from uh Mr. Treister. Uh, regarding uh dog park uh potential health and safety issues. Uh, so next, under reports, uh, town planner, uh, Ms. Hodges, uh, do we should give a report uh on your activities?
Um, oh, am I unmuted? Yes.
You're unmuted. We can hear you.
Sorry. Um, there's not a tremendous amount on my end to report. I've been working on, you know, several grants. We have the RFP out for the housing plan now. So I, I sent it to some specific uh planning firms that have been doing them in the region, so. Hopefully we'll hear back from a few of them soon. I think it closes at the end of the month, like the twenty-eighth or something. Uh, so I'm anxious to get started on that. Um. Uh, I didn't foray your mind because it's just kind of boring this month. Just been doing a lot on the plan reviews and working on the regulations, making some. Uh, possible changes. The GIS update has begun, at least uh the, I think the commercial districts on the GIS map are correct. We're working on the, the uh. Residential ones now, as I sent him that spreadsheet and I'm hoping that he can just go through and, you know, manually swap out those. Uh, and then, and uh, I heard back from Klaus that, you know, he's progressing, but it's gonna take him, you know, several months to even get through the first updates. And, and then we'll have to move forward to figure out how we're gonna get all of the others updated. I was talking to the Tri-Town Trail folks today, and if they do end up getting the grant in on time, I ask that a portion of that money be dedicated to updating the open space map. Parcels, doing that work, just getting it done so that we have a plan in place for what parcels we might want in the future. Because the way I feel, if, if we have a plan of which parcels would be crucial to get. That the next time we get a conservation or an open space or in any subdivision, that's gonna give us open space that instead of just taking some random spot. We take the fee and in order to stockpile that money to be able to purchase the ones that we do definitely need for a project like the Tri-Town Trail or, or other projects, I mean. Or to assist Avalonia in purchasing something or however we want to do it, so. Uh. I'm just, I'm very anxious to get these maps updated because I'm such a visual person, that's very hard for me not to have that in front of me. Um, and I did meet with uh, I can't remember his name, sorry, from Avalonia about the founder's preserved property. I guess we're still waiting to figure out. What portion the town wants to keep and what portion will be donated or however that's working with Avalonia. I'm coming in on that late, so.
I'm guessing it's the separation because there's a, a house on what was the entrance to it, and so I'm, I'm assuming it's still the, the removal of that lot, I would guess.
Yeah, it kind of comes up and goes in back a little bit of the other house, but the survey is not done. I mean, it's still a lot line adjustment or whatever, so we still need that to be finished. But all of our steep grants and are moving along. I mean, I'm sort of got my hands full with, with grants at the moment and, and just getting caught up.
Great, thank you.
Mike Cherry's got a much more exciting report than mine is.
Uh, any questions for the planner from commissioners? Hearing none, uh, zoning official?
Yeah, I, I think we need to uh shoot the guy who championed the regs that we're currently using and a lot of the drawings that I see, there's some guy named Cherry signed a bunch of that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
I think he never thought he would be an enforcement official because. Uh, there, there are some changes that probably should be made and, and, you know, Juliette is underestimating the task that she's taken on, trying to keep me out of trouble. Uh. In, in one month, I already have a uh. Uh. Person who's appealing one of my decisions to the ZBA that I hope to shortcut before it gets to air, but, you know, oops. Um, the only thing in the report is, is uh permit applications and permit completions. What I hope to do, uh, what I'm gonna do, uh, not yet by direction, but soon to be, I'm sure, is uh. Pattern my report on uh the report you get from the Director of Land Use so that it's more meaningful. Uh, give you more meat on what the enforcement actions are, which I think will help you decide. Uh, what changes, if any, should be uh accomplished in the regulations. Uh, there are things that require enforcement. There are things that require enforcement because the regulation says they can't do it or they shouldn't do it that maybe the town would really prefer that we do. So the areas that, that are getting the most attention now, a lot of real estate agents are calling, wanting to know what our rules are for short-term rentals. So they're looking to buy property, I would think. Animal husbandry still seems to be a big thing. How many chickens? How many ducks? Can I have a donkey? What's the rules for horses? So moving that agricultural part forward would probably help us. Blight's still an issue. And, and, you know, short-term rentals is an interesting problem. I, I, by our count, when we did the regs and the last time, we had like sixty-five hundred properties. We have ten short-term rental sites by the last count, five with permits, five without. Out of those ten, two of those without permits have been problematic. So it's, it's two out of sixty-five hundred properties are causing a lot of problems and taking a lot of time. And, and if you happen to be a resident who lives next door to them, it's a terrible problem. For the rest of the town, they're, they're wondering what the heck we're talking about. So, you know, I think we have to help our our residents who happen to live next door to one of these that's causing a lot of problems. So a lot of effort being put in there. Better report next time. Report would get better if I kept better track of what the heck I was doing and.
Yeah. I have one question for you.
Yes.
What is NSFH?
New Single Family Home. I didn't create that. That abbreviation came from Kyle and I think probably from Joe Larkin. I didn't make that one up, but
Oh, yeah.
I didn't put a legend on it. Yeah.
Not familiar, so thank you. It's a lot. We have quite a few of those.
There's
A lot of houses.
Lot of work being done and, and a lot of them are finishing up, you know, so. You know, our, all our surveyors are gone. Trying to find out where they hid the monuments has been a lot of fun. I've really enjoyed that.
That peeved mine, yeah.
Especially with the rain and the overgrown weeds and the ticks and stuff. It's a lot of fun crawling through, you know.
Oh, we should mention that Stonegate. You went out to Stonegate and they have done some of the things that, that are on the stipulated agreement. Certain things are backward or like the lights and actual fence posts or something or gates or something, but they've done a nice job and I think we can move forward on the five houses that were being held up because they hadn't complied.
He planted a, a nice hedge and, and he was a little tighter than the nine-foot spacing that was talked about earlier tonight. But he had smaller trees and then they look like the American abreviate that deer don't like, so they might last. But he planted a nice buffer row which I think people will be happy with. I was amazed walking that property with Mr. Delaporte, how many long-term residents there are, how, how loyal they are to their park, how well they take care of it. And you know, I'm hearing that they've made a commitment to finish it up and now, now would be a good time because we're short that kind of housing.
Yeah, it's good if that's, if that's finally moving forward and getting those things checked off so that it can get, it can get completed. A bunch of weedy, empty lots on some of those roads don't do anybody any favors.
They kept, they kept the grass down and, you know, I want to congratulate Mr. Treaster. There's a lot of credit due to Mr. Treaster for how that thing looks twenty years down the road. So, you know, the, the vision of what it should be made it what it is. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? WPCA, anything? No? With that, I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Though without objection at eight fifteen PM, I will end this meeting of the Ledger Planning and Zoning Commission. Deb, you can stop the recorder.